Want to control the CBD bid?
Time to consider and control?
The.
So is there a second for that amendment? That councillor Mallett's going to second that. I think we're pretty clear on both the motion and the amendment. So I'm going to move into debate and I ask that speakers speak to both items simultaneously. So I'll go to the mover of the motion first. Your worship.
All right, so let's start with some clarity here. There is currently a policy. That's the first point. And under that policy, we have one business improvement district which is called the H C B A. How did that come about? It came about because collectively, a group of people in the central city wanted to have an association that had some security of funding to enable it to do things in the central city that it felt were of value to it economically. This process has been about reviewing that policy. This policy applies to any business improvement district. We only have one currently, but this policy is a generic policy that sets out a framework and a process for any collective group approved by the council after going through the process to establish an association to do things in their neighbourhood. I think people have been getting well and truly mixed up about what this policy actually is. Secondly, the point I want to make is council has a role in this and one of those roles is legal. We are the only part of this puzzle that has the legal authority to rate. And the reason that business improvement districts around the world use the rating mechanism is because it is a surety of income or revenue for the association that operates. And secondly, of course, it puts a scrutiny over the legal veracity of that revenue because an independent group is assessing whether it's appropriate or not. So let's not get mixed up with how can the bid get its money. This policy is about giving an association the right to come to the council to request that a rate be put over a certain area and we are the only ones that have that authority to do that. Our second role is accountability. So I have found the discussions about council control quite interesting and you can hand pick out things and make a little list. But one thing that's very important for me is that if we are going to rate people, which is compulsory, take money from them, I do want some accountability about where that's going. So I think the policy is very clear about that. Basically, the business association fronts up to us and it puts in front of us a plan about how it's going to spend that money and how much money it needs and therefore the request to rate. That, according to the policy, and which is the current position today under the existing policy, is that the members must approve that because it's a membership organisation. So they are saying, I'm happy with that work programme and I'm happy that you take money from me for that work programme. The other thing that is important about the accountability is that we check in that the business association set up under this policy has done what it said it would do because we are accountable to the rate payer for taking their money. So I actually want to have some control over that because if it all turns pear shaped, then there must be a mechanism, given that we are the only legal authority that can rate, that they are doing what they said they would do. And 9.4 and 9.5 are very clear about that, as is 9.9. The performance is assessed against the plan they put up, the K P I's we agreed to, and their audited annual report. Pretty straightforward stuff to me. I don't find this complicated at all. I think this is what the public expect of us and clearly they do because the business association's had good support. What I do know is that this process is the one that has been followed since the business association that we know, H C B A, first started operating. And in my time here, I am pretty certain of this, I don't think there's been any councillor who has not accepted that work programme or not accepted the annual report and the performance against K P I's. Now, I'm happy to stand correct on that, but certainly in the Business and Investment Subcommittee, there's been no issues raised about that. Now, the reason I raise that is because that is the time to say, I'm not happy or you're not performing. And I can't recall that having been said. In relation to the amendment about deferring matters, a CBD board would be a business improvement district. Doesn't matter what you call it, the mechanism by which it would operate would be the same because it also wants certainty of revenue and it doesn't have the legal right to compulsory acquire that revenue. So I have no concern at all about discussions about a potential CBD board continuing because it would be, in my view, ridiculous to have a number of entities operating in the central city. If the H C B A isn't the association and it becomes a board, look, is it membership? Is it going to get rates money? What's the geographical area? All those things are covered in this policy. And that is how it would operate. So I'm hoping those discussions will continue because I think it will flush out something and may give a different outcome, but the policy is still appropriate and still would apply. And look, the final thing I want to say is, one of the reasons why you might have a business improvement district is not to create more paperwork and not more reports and all of those things. It's because businesses operating in a geographical area believe that they should have more control over the projects that they want that will deliver a better economic outcome for their commercial area. Our job in response to that is to have a framework by which that can be realised and that framework must include accountability and I think this policy well and truly covers all of that. So I'm very happy to support this policy and would remind councillors that the review was conducted with a group of people external to the council who represented all sectors that have a commercial interest in the central city and they put forward the policy to the Business and Investment Subcommittee, saying they were happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to further speakers, as a second, I'd like to say a few words. I actually do hear exactly the point that a couple of councillors, particularly councillor Mallett, raised. The business association was in existence long before council actually did play a role. We had nothing to do with that association when it first started. The reason we became involved was, like the mayor said, that they wanted some surety and they also wanted to create or have the ability to create real impact. They followed the example of the new market bid, which was fairly new and very, very successful, I might add. And of course, that new market bid did, I guess, go in a very safe direction and a compulsory direction for funding by asking council to apply targeted rates. During the process of setting this up, yes, council could have said, no, if you want funding, then why don't you do what other organisations do and ask your members to simply fund you and if it's a good idea, it's going to be supported. So, you know, there is another way that this could have been done and possibly could still be done. But I think doing things in partnership works and I think that in the eight years, the one association that has worked under this policy has done exceptionally well and been involved in that establishment board right at the beginning. I know how many businesses in the central city were very sceptical about the future and what a bid would look like for them. And I know after that eight years, how incredibly supportive they now are and how much traction that they have received. Sure, there's still some issues in the CBD and everyone thinks that, you know, they have the recipe to fix that. But I know that that association has gone from strength to strength and in part because we have this policy. The amendment wants us to consider a CBD board. Look, this has been proposed, oh goodness, I don't know, in the last three or four years from the property council. And I have to ask myself why then they haven't gone ahead and done like the chamber has done and simply set up a board and simply canvassed members and said, well, this is a great idea, so would you like to fund it? The only assumption I can make, and it is my personal opinion, is that they would also want to work that CBD board under this policy because it is guaranteed funding. So I guess in a roundabout way, without speaking directly to them, that would indicate to me that they are supportive of a policy as well. So I don't support the amendment and I do support the motion for those reasons. So further speakers? Councillor King.
The mayor's right. Only this council can take targeted rates. Nobody else can do that. But what's happening to that rate is that this council have totally wrapped up this policy, so it's stacked in our favour. And we're in there, we can control it, we can manipulate it, we can get the outcomes we want and the organisation turns into a puppet organisation that's there to please us. That's the difference between when the property council came to this group and talked to us and laid out what they wanted to do with a, asking us to put up and put resources into coming up with a proposal for an independent board. And it's what I proposed as an emotion at the B and I committee, which nobody else on that committee would second, so it couldn't get traction on that stage. So this is really the first time that we've had the chance to present this to full council, where you've got an option to consider, considering an independent board to run the city, bid money, use the city's bid money instead of the council manipulating and controlling. The North East is running fine. Their association out there doesn't need us because we're not in there dabbling, manipulating and controlling, as with other areas in the city. This consultation is very weak and in fact, I don't see anything positive apart from the people who are receiving the funding at the moment. The K P I's which are in this policy, we're putting this policy in so that it can be rolled out into other areas. If you follow through the K P I's in 9.8 and this policy, clearly, the association at the moment is failing. If you're measuring their performance against these K P I's, what have we done about that? Nothing. So what I'm asking is that we sit back and we wait for a report to come through on a proposal to have an independent board to use the bid how they see fit without interference from this council. And because the track record, from what I can see, is that CBD at the moment is failing with this bid in place. So why are we proposing to put it in a position where other people can use it as well, other areas in the city? So I'd urge you to vote with the amendment, not the motion.
Councillor Pascoe.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important to realise that this report and what we're voting on is about a bid policy for use across the city. And whilst it may be at times and in certain circumstances appropriate to compare it with the progress of an existing bid, I think we should be really focusing on here as to whether or not this bid policy is something that we should not necessarily hold up if there is a reason why the present structure in the Hamilton Central Business Area is not working. When I look at the policy, there seems to me to be ample opportunity in Part Nine for the parties, the Hamilton City Council and the Bid Association, to offer alternative structures where this will improve the partnership relationship and then better align with the city's strategic planning, which is referred to in Para 1.5. Clause 1.7 requires the Bid Association to work with others and specifically mentions the property council, the Chamber of Commerce and so forth. It specifically mentions both the property council and the Chamber of Commerce. So I think the bid does provide ample scope for the parties to agree on an appropriate operating structure, whether it's an association or a board or whatever will best suit that. And I think in our case, it's best to continue with the approval of this bid and let the stakeholders work through a process and report back on what changes they believe are agreeable to them. It's also important, and the mayor has strengthened this view, that it's important that the council does have the right to withhold funds if the bid group becomes dysfunctional. Funds that we collect via rates are collected under the statutory authority of the Local Government Act and so therefore there is a statutory responsibility on council to make sure that those funds are used in accordance with the city's strategy for the collection of those rates. I guess the proof around the ability or the likelihood of the council interfering and taking control over the bid where those opportunities exist would seem to me to be unlikely if we look back on the last eight years and the time period in which the current bid has been operating. So I'm voting in favour of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mallett.
Thank you. I think, but I'm not sure, that some of the reasons the CBD is struggling, if I use the word correctly, is that the obvious development of commercial centres, retail centres, the base and Rototurner etc. I mean, the city has grown and spread out, I think, but I'm not sure that the CBD suffers from council's policies to reduce or restrict private car usage in town and is relying on the infantile expectation that people are going to walk or catch buses or drive cycles into town. So I don't think the CBD, forgive your pardon, the current bid or the current Central Business Association really has much impact over the things that I think, but I'm not sure, have been the major drivers in the demise of the CBD itself. I don't think the organisation has a target on its back at all because of that. However, the difference between the two options is about accountability. And my reading of it, my understanding of it is, is that the independent board will be far more reactive to what is actually happening in the CBD than the current structure, the structure that is mooted in the motion rather than the amendment. So it's because I think the independent board will be more responsive, will be more in touch with its members than the current structure, that I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you, councillor. Any further speakers? Karl Dickremier.
Thanks, Chair. I will be voting for the resolution. I think the CBD organisation is doing a great job, given the fact that they are operating in a very tough environment. I mean, there's no secret that people aren't preferring to shop in a mall-like environment. Chartwell, the base, so the market has changed. And the public commentary around the CBD and the fact that it no longer is the success it once used to be, the public commentary is around the vacant buildings around the city. And surprise, surprise, council does not own any of those buildings. We sold the Biggs Wiseman's building to a developer who will do a great job. But we don't own those buildings. So my challenge is, in the CBD argument, the debate, is that those buildings are owned by the property owners who are members of the property council. Now, yes, they've been caught with the earthquake requirements. They've been caught with very old buildings that are down the scale and if A is for a new building, the buildings that are vacant are largely down in E categories, requiring earthquake strengthening. Now, that is not council's fault. That is New Zealand legislation that has forced property owners to rethink what they do with those old buildings. And regrettably, one of the options is to demolish those buildings and replace them. And that is happening. There have been some very good examples of buildings being replaced in the city as we talk. So I just want to make it clear that the CBD association cannot accept any blame for the vacant buildings. The council cannot accept any blame for the vacant buildings. And it's time that the property council fessed up and said, look, our members own those buildings, we don't know what to do with them. Because that's the reality of the situation. Don't blame council, get the property council to look at its members, what they own and what they're going to do to change the environment. Otherwise, we're just playing and moving the deck chairs.
Thank you. Right, any other speakers? Councillor Gallagher.
Yes. By a narrow margin, I'll be supporting the motion because the key element for me is 1.7. And Calvin has indicated that those discussions are happening and that the property council, as I understand it, has a key role if they wish to exercise it within the bid because obviously they're on an electoral roll and they participate. And it seems to me this is how we, at this stage, move forward. However, I am very grateful to the intervention and contribution of councillor King, who in another life, as Mr King, is a business person with some substance. And you don't always have to agree with councillor King, or dare I say it, Mr King, but I think he has brought some very valuable perspectives to the table. Now, part of life is often robust debate and robust criticism. All my life, my adult life, I have endured robust criticism. It's been the nature, certainly the nature of being an elected member. I've been involved with organisations that has received robust criticism down the track. That's as it is. I will respond robustly. And I want to encourage organisations not to be guided by, whether it's March, May 2016 or 2017 to 2015, whether it's election year, national election year, local election year, the Zimbabwe elections is not relevant. It's actually the tenor of the conversation, the tenor of the argument. And I think it's really good that we can have a robust, but hopefully reasonably respectful conversation. Having said that, I want to absolutely acknowledge the excellent work that the Hamilton Central Business Association has done and the number of initiatives it has taken and the very hard tasks that face any CBD organisation, particularly in our economy at this stage. I also would say to the property council, I think there's some very good evidence, dare I say, of vibrance and energy. Obviously, we have to move way beyond a two-page summary or a two-page proposal to substantive proposal and hopefully, we are dealing all with very, very mature people who have got a lot of investments tied up, a lot of capital, a lot of business energy tied up. So as I said, I come back to 1.7 and I'm really looking forward for that ongoing, mature, comprehensive discussion, which is in the interests of all of our city. I do agree with the mayor, however, and I have one observation where people say, we'll keep sort of politics out of all of this. In the end, rating is public money, obviously, it's a rate. People don't get to choose once a decision is made as to how those rates are collected. And ultimately, as the minister for local government will remind this council, the buck will stop with this council and with the elected members. So it's very important that we do ultimately understand that you can have any model you like, but the buck ultimately stops in this chamber. I want to wish the bid well and I'm certainly looking forward, Calvin, to those mature, businesslike and comprehensive discussions, which hopefully will be for the good of our city. And I think, I'm feeling optimistic because I think we've got evidence of very good energy from the Hamilton Central Business Association, property council, Chamber of Commerce. I think the stars hopefully may be starting to align and I think we're seeing some very good excitement in terms of what's actually starting to happen in our CBD.
If I may, I am aware that they've had their first meeting whilst we were debating this.
Yeah. Great.
Who hit?
The three, so H C B A, property council and Chamber of Commerce have had their initial first kickoff.
All right. There are no further speakers? I'm going to put the amendment first.
I want to write a reply.
Oh, sorry, your worship, write a reply.
Which I don't exercise very often. I just want to make it very clear to councillors in relation to the CB board issue and the amendment. It clause 3.6 enables members of a business improvement district to stand for the executive committee. And my colloquial understanding is that a number of the members of the business association, of the business improvement district in the central city are also members of the property council. So that's the first thing you can actually stand for and be appointed to the executive committee. And secondly, in terms of advancing some of the matters that the property council have put before us about the merits of a CBD board, albeit in a short paper, I also draw councillors' attention to 9.5, which of course requires the executive committee to front up with their work programme and all their projects and how they're going to, you know, what they're going to do. But more importantly, what budget they need and a request for the council to target rate. And if you look at 6.10 councillors, you will see that they also, in supporting that, provide evidence that their members are happy for that to occur. So my point being that any proposal about a CBD board and what it could do is encapsulated in the existing policy. And those people who are members of the property council, as I said, many of them are members of the business improvement district membership role and they could be on the executive committee and advance their programme of work, which as I understand it, last count, had considerable dollars attached to it. But they certainly got the mechanism within the policy. So I encourage councillors to get the policy signed off so that in fact, it's ready and waiting, should Calvin come back to us with an extensive report about what they want to do. Thanks.
Okay, I'll put the amendment. Hold it on the show of hands. All those in favour for the amendment, raise your hands. Can you call out the names, please, for online viewers?
Those for the amendment are councillors King, McPherson, Green, and Mallett.
And those against the amendment, raise your hands.
That's councillor O'Leary, Chesterman, Young, Gallagher, her worship the mayor Hardacre, Pascoe, and Tooman. The amendment has been lost.
Thank you. And so we have the motion on the boards, all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands.
Those for the motion are councillor O'Leary, Chesterman, Young, Gallagher, her worship the mayor Hardacre, councillors Pascoe, McPherson, Green, Mallett, and Tooman.
And those against?
Councillor King.
Sorry, she's got my name last week. You're right, Andrew.
Great, thank you, that's passed. Thanks Calvin. What have we got? One, two, three, four, five, six. Right, we're on to item nine, page 54, this is the social wellbeing indicator report, and we have Dee and Andy in the hot seat. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, I'll take the report as read. Ultimately, there's been a couple of reports that have been back through community forum subcommittee, as well as regarding the social wellbeing indicator report. Really, this is just to give visibility for this committee regarding some of the feedback that was received on the 17th of February, at the briefing held with elected members around the draft, any feedback received around that. So happy to take any questions, thank you.
Right, thank you councillor Mallett.
Thank you. On paragraph four, very end of the paragraph, talks about a benchmark to measure social wellbeing. Can you give us some examples of those?
Ultimately, as you will remember councillor, we had the social wellbeing strategy, so what we're proposing is retiring that and replacing that with a social wellbeing indicator report, which actually the city doesn't have, which will actually give us a baseline of how we measure, or how well we're actually going in terms of social wellbeing for the city. So at the moment, we don't have that.
Yep, and so what will it look like when you have got one?
Ultimately, we will see improvements in the indicators that we've already...
No, no, my question is, what is the indicator?
Sorry, sir.
We've got this concept floating around called a benchmark to social, to measure social wellbeing. What would the benchmark be?
Councillor, if you remember, I presented back a report back in December the 8th last year, and there was a draft social indicator report that was put forward that actually measures a whole range of things, and so that will be the trend data that will actually be measured against and actually tracked.
So what are those sort of things?
So ultimately, what you see in the table in front of you, from 16.16 there.
So how many people have got a phone, how many, what ethnicity we've got, how many people talk, how many, how many times you talk to people?
That's correct.
How does any of this differ from what you get from the census?
So some of the information will actually come from the census data, and as you'll remember in the report that I presented back in December of last year, some of that information will also come from the quality of life survey, as well as the resident survey as well. So a lot of this demographic information that will be pulled together will come from a whole range of sources, that will be, that will provide the actual context and the background to our social indicator report, which will report back in February of next year.
So on paragraph six, we then, at the very end of it, says, it will identify how the social wellbeing indicator report will be used by council going forward. So are we doing a report that we don't even know how council's going to use it?
At this point in time, so ultimately, the social indicator report, which will be backed up by robust data, and will give us trend data around measuring how well we are going in terms of social wellbeing for Hamilton City, and as I mentioned before, we actually don't have that baseline data at all. So basically, moving forward, the social indicator...
Why don't we have that, sorry, Dee, why don't we have that baseline data? We've had a social wellbeing strategy previously, is that, was that a fizzle? Did we waste a whole lot of rate payers' money on that one?
The comment that I would make is, we had a strategy that was measuring actions.
Well, what happened to that other thing? On paragraph 12, you talk about a social welfare strategy, was that no good?
Actually, there were a lot of actions that have all been completed as part of the social wellbeing strategy. And as time has evolved, and in terms of what we've been doing, our staff recommendation is to move from a strategy and measuring actions in a strategy, to actually a social indicator report that will actually give us good trend analysis on how well we're performing as a city within the social wellbeing aspect, which we actually don't currently have. So a strategy doesn't enable that. Social indicators will.
Okay, I guess I just get the same creepy feeling I had before when we're talking about plans on top of plans, and I just see some, dare I say it, kind of waffly sort of things that I don't see any impact or any value in coming through. I mean, most of the stuff you'd get from a census, which you get done for free, I have very little sense that there will be any, so I need to be convinced that there'll be any value in this to the rate payer at all. Why is there no budget allocated?
Because that will actually be all done within house, because it's a cross-organisation approach. So there'll be input from Julie Claussen's team, there'll be input from my team, there'll also be input from the comms and marketing team as well.
I thought we had sort of a, I don't know if it was an understanding, that we were going to start allocating, even if it was internal, costs to these things. Because I've been ranting and raving about there being no budget allocated for lots of things.
Apologies for that, sir, number 22.
If you refer at the back there.
So why is it not up in the summary report there? Why is it not in the summary report? Summary little box there?
Apologies, an error in the report.
Okay, so how will this benefit the rate payer? How will this benefit the citizens of Hamilton?
Ultimately, and the conversations that we've had with the central government agencies who signed up to this social wellbeing strategy, that this trend analysis information will be actually good data for them in terms of what they're doing. In terms of the community forum subcommittee, will actually provide probably more targeted conversations around areas of concern, or also around areas of opportunity within the social wellbeing space.
So what would be an area of opportunity?
I can't answer that at the moment, I'll have to go away, I can circulate that off. So if, sorry, if I may through the chair, so if there are areas we're actually doing well, we actually want to celebrate those successes, and that's often something that we actually don't do.
So you're going to measure loneliness and things like that?
Social connectedness within our community is a really important measure for social wellbeing.
Big health goals there.
So why would that be the responsibility of a city council?
It's not the responsibility of city council, what the social indicator report will actually measure and provide some trend analysis around that stuff. So that information is captured through census data, it's also captured through the quality of lives survey, so we as a council is giving visibility for our communities around how well we're tracking within the social wellbeing space.
Okay, I guess my question is, and I've alluded to it previously, I find it very hard to see, yeah, there might be a small amount of value, I don't think we will do this well, and I don't think that there will be a significant payback to the citizens of the city or to the rate payers.
Through you.
Yes, I can, committee members, I can hear when councillor Mallett is not making a question. Question councillor Mallett, that wasn't a question?
Do you agree?
Do you agree with the question? Let's stop.
Well, I guess I've asked, how do you measure, okay, how do you measure the value you get out of this? How do you measure the value of the cost in terms of, some of the very people, I dare say, that you are concerned about, some of the people at the lowest, on the lower economic steps of the ladder, are the ones who are going to be paying for this? How do you justify that to them?
The GM's taken a stand there, so let's get him to...
Can I just say that this information be used in quite a bit of our planning implementation, the monitoring of how well we're doing in a number of areas? Influencing things around infrastructure that council may get involved with, city safety plan, a bunch of different initiatives that we're involved in, either as a council or with other agencies, and this will provide information towards those, and then also help monitor the success of those interventions. And there's quite a range of them, if you look at our strategies and plans, and if you look at all the information here, you're right, that it's going from a number of different sources, and then you can actually see if those interventions are actually working over time, you get trend analysis, and that will actually help council then form views based on empirical information, are we actually investing in the right areas with other agencies?
Thank you.
Councillor Pascoe. Oh, actually councillor Pascoe, before we, if you're happy, can I just go, and I should have done this at the beginning, my apologies councillor Gallagher, as Chair, are there any points before we continue with questions, because your subcommittee has done the work on this?
No, this process did, if you recall, involve a comprehensive consultation exercise with colleague councillors, and as you're aware, there was a very, very good turnout, and we thanked all those non-members who came to the last community forum, who assisted us in this exercise. And I think one of the things also, which probably want to stress is, is we're also comparing ourselves with national benchmarks, that's quite important in terms of the state of the play. And one of the things, for example, if I may say, about the Hamilton Plan, is all about positioning our city as a good place to live, work, play, settle, and it was very relevant that Professor Coopman-Bourdon, in terms of her presentation around an aging strategy. So all of this data is quite crucial, in my view, that informs our policy in a lot of directions. So for example, yesterday, and I'll just stop there, but I'll just bear with me, we had the opening of the Deanwall Playground. Now, you know, it's but one of the components in the fabric of the neighbourhood, but the demographics of the area, the partnership with schools, all of this stuff helps guide our policy. Rototuna, the gymnasium facility, the sports facility that we are partnering, all of this helps guide us. So I think the intent, and councillor Mallett, my good friend councillor Mallett's quite right, we can't do everything, we don't intend to do anything, but the bits we do should be based on good information about the population that lives here.
Thank you. Councillor Pascoe.
Thank you. First question is, will the report that we expect to get in February 2017, will it be aligned to the same or similar questions, or similar information that we can expect to get out of the census in March 2018?
That's correct, because that's where we're sourcing some of that information from.
So there'll be an alignment or a potential benchmark that we could use on that data when the 2018 census figures become available?
That's correct.
Yeah. Is there a risk that the information that we gather for this report, given that you're taking it across the whole of the organisation, is there a risk that some of that information might be dated, in the sense that by the time you bring it together from across the organisation and put it together in that report of February 2017, it may already be out of date? I mean, there's 10, seems to me there's 10 content areas here that I guess you'll be reporting to.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, there's, I guess, a variety of when the measures are taken, and we will endeavour to have the most up-to-date data for the report, which will be a mixture of year-end through to calendar year-end for some of the measures that are...
So if you think it's a bit dated, you might try and get more up-to-date information?
We will have the most...
To try and get it into the 2017 sort of timeline?
We will have the most up-to-date information that we possibly can report on with accuracy and confidence to our community.
Okay, thank you. Fine, sorry.
If I may through the chair, we'd also then determine with that report how often that trend analysis will be reported back, to make sure that it does align with the different timeframes that we're sourcing that data from.
Okay. And just with the expectation of the detail that I think we'll be getting in this report, is the $12,000 time budget for staff, is that adequate?
On best estimates, we believe that will cover the cost for the analysis, the report writing, and the graphic design, as well as the external communication, so we are confident.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a couple of, sorry councillor Yonk, I just have a couple of questions if I can jump in early. Just on page 56, under crime and safety, the third one there, feelings of safety and self-assessed victims of crime etcetera, is that going to include actual statistics from the police? Is that able to be gathered? Or is this from, I mean, it says the quality of life survey, so that's how people verbalise how they feel about a place?
Unfortunately, in the relation, in the conversations with police partners, having a particular measure that we can consistently come back over time, has proved to be too challenging for this type of report, because of the raft of reasons there, so it is a perception.
So you have tried, and, okay. And just the second one, in the health and wellbeing, the last one there on that same page, emergency department visits per 1,000 people, and then compared to the Waikato average, and you've got Waikato DHB will be providing that information updated annually. Is it, and we saw this through the local alcohol policy work, is it the intention that that information could be drilled down into the amount of alcohol-related incidents? Because that is something that would directly give us hardcore information on what is happening in the city, and relate to a policy that's important to us. Can it be that targeted?
We can pursue that conversation and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. Right, councillor Yonk?
Yeah, for those items on the tables, all the measures, are they final, or there will be some more additional added in there while you're working on the indicator?
This is the final, this is why we're bringing back the report, yeah.
Okay. So may I ask, I know the civic engagement, there are a number of residents gaining citizenship, is there a way to find out, because the number of migrants coming, can we find out for Hamilton whether anyone under skilled migrant category, or how many under business investment category? Is there a way to find out that, or we'll be interested to know that?
We can inquire into that line of work with our team.
Yeah, chat with the immigration one. Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
I'm happy to move it, but I do have some additions.
Okay, thank you.
Page 54A, B, with the addition of, at the end of social wellbeing indicator report, and the report is to include the most recent data publicly available, and a new C, although C will become D, that the health and wellbeing measure is to include the number of emergency department visits categorised as alcohol-related visits. And could I just fill up, sorry, could you just clarify the immigration one, where was that under?
The number of coming under skilled migrant category or the business investment category, that's two different types.
Yes, where are we looking?
It's not in there, so I'll just see if that can be added in the list.
Okay, so could you just give me the wording, because I want to include that, because I think what you raised was very important. So it was to include...
It'd be the second last box on page 56, I think, your worship?
The second last box, civic engagement?
Yeah. That's the, only for citizenship, that's different.
Oh, sorry.
So it's a new category, immigration?
Yeah, if possible, because I don't know if immigration got those data for Hamilton, for the whole country maybe, yeah.
Yeah, and the data is?
Yeah, for the skilled migrant category and the business investment category.
Okay.
The number, yeah.
Refugees?
Well, we can have those numbers.
They've got that data.
Yeah, plus refugees maybe, yeah.
Okay, and that the report is to include a category entitled... And that the report is to include a category entitled immigration and the measure is the number of skilled migrants. The number of migrants categorised in, yeah, who gain entry as skilled migrants and or...
BI, business investment category.
Business investment category. Because I do know they do collect that data and I do know that that data is available in subsets.
Happy to second that.
Can I ask a question of Your Worship?
So can, we just get this written down first? So just to clarify, Mary B would read, the Strategy and Policy Committee approves the final content to be included in the social wellbeing indicator report with the report to include the most recent data publicly available. And the health and wellbeing category is to include as a measure the number of alcohol-related visits to the emergency department and a new category entitled immigration with the measures being the number of migrants categorised in the skilled migrant or business investment category. All right? What about how many times we need to go to the toilet? And so the refugees? Yeah, no, I mean, I'll speak to this as to why I've included those and why this report is important. Dee, I know that information. And I also know that the DHB instituted the alcohol process, that they did record alcohol-related visits.
Councillor Mallett, got a question?
Your Worship, I just want to, you're talking about migrants. So you're talking about people coming from overseas who are a certain qualification and things like that. What about people coming from Auckland or Wellington?
No, no, I'm interested, I mean, if you want to move an amendment, this is about understanding the ethnicity make-up of our city and what categories of people are arriving into the city and their contribution.
Internal migration, heart of measure.
True it is, but I'm very happy to pick up councillor...
You're talking about internal, internal migration. Internal migration.
Yeah, yeah.
If he thinks it needs to be more than that, I'd be guided by him.
I'd be happy to.
And I'd check with the staff and thus saying that information is about...
Madam Chair, can I ask if we normally do motions by committee? You know, we do the wording for them and everyone adds tuppence with it?
We have done in the past.
Hang on, is the normal thing to ask the mover of the motion to have it prepared somewhat so that they actually hand it over to the staff and we can get on with it? We're taking quarter of an hour just to write the motion. We haven't even started debating it.
Well, yes, we've been doing that through this whole meeting, through various elected members. That's the process that they have used, coming up with a motion on the foot, so...
Well, with all due respect, and when we have council meetings, the mayor often insists on people doing that, that they have it pre-prepared. So I was just hoping that she might follow.
Yes, so Chair, I'm very happy in my defence to say, don't include any of it. I'm very happy just to remove the motion as it's presented, but listening to the conversations today, it occurred to me that it might be more useful for us to have these categories. But look, I'm very happy not to include any of them. I was simply picking up thinking, yes, that actually sounds useful, but look, I'm not precious about it at all. If you can't be bothered with it, fine with me.
Just, Wendy, again, Your Worship, would you include alcohol and drug?
Yes, and drug. So you're talking about admission to hospital, so you're picking up alcohol and drugs.
Yeah, you're trying to pick out harm products, aren't you?
Okay, we're going to take, look, we...
Trying to be helpful.
We're going to take, we're going to take a five-minute break. Get this sorted out.